States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Tobin.
Here.
Alderman Jean Francois.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Ray.
Here.
Alderman Kleiner.
Here.
Alderman Green.
Alderman Witt.
Here.
Alderman Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
For Mr. President.
Approval of minutes.
January 3rd, 2023, please.
Got a motion. Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Ray, all in favor?
Aye.
Correspondents?
Good evening, we have a letter from the Law Offices of Fabricant Lippman in Fishburg concerning the Orange Terrace Properties LLC, 3-13 Orange Terrace, Middletown, New York. Dear gentlemen, as you know, this office represents Orange Terrace Properties LLC. In reference to the upcoming Common Council public hearing to be held on February 7th, 2023, we would like to withdraw our application for the four-lot subdivision without prejudice. Please contact us as soon as possible. Very truly yours, Neil D. Fishburg.
Received and filed.
We also have been notified by the Orange County Legislature that Resolution 18 of 2023 has been adopted, authorizing the county executive to enter into an agreement with certain Orange County municipalities, providing for the exemption from county taxation of lands owned and used for them by the water supply and for related purposes.
Received and filed. Okay, for the good of the city, we have a special presentation from the Orange County. Oh, no, this is never. For the good of the city, anyone who would like to address the council, please step forward.
Good afternoon, oh, good evening, everyone. Kevin Gomez, member of the Middletown School Board. It's that time of the year where our school board will be moving forward, holding hearings on the respective issues concerning the budget. Our school district will be adopting a budget later this year, and the voters will decide whether to accept it or not. So here are the dates and the different topics. February 2nd, well, that passed time. February 16th, we'll be looking at the budget with respect to instructional expenses. March 9th, capital and benefits. March 23rd, revenue discussion. April 20th, budget adoption. May 4th, budget hearing, and the budget vote, an election vote, will be on Tuesday, May 16, 2023. In addition to that, there will be, for the community, and everyone's invited, there'll be a public session for community engagement or info sessions. We have one scheduled for March 8th, budget review, community Q and A. April 27th, budget review, community Q and A. And May 10th, with respect to the Board of Education, adopted budget review, Q and A, and all the public, members of our communities and our respective elected officials are invited to let your voices be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the council?
I know Dr. Johnson's going to address it, but the public hearing's canceled, so I believe the public should respond under here on the advice of our council, since this appears to be an issue and may be litigated in the future. And I think Paul's going to explain it, or if you want me to go into it a little bit now. But it should be under this order rather than under a public hearing. Because the acts, comments by the board may be misconstrued to try to influence the zoning board of appeals. So when we spoke with council, myself and Alderman Johnson, we did not feel it's appropriate to tell the public that they can't address this issue. So they're here tonight, so we have to handle it under the good of the city rather than under the public hearing. And Paul can go into a little bit more detail. So I think it's appropriate to do it now.
Thank you.
You got it.
So the facts of the case, I think, are familiar to many of the people in the room. A proposal for four houses went before the planning board. The planning board is advisory in a question like this, it's not definitive, and it came back to the council. I'm addressing it now as the vice chairman of planning and economic development. We had a committee meeting at our last meeting, and the five of us talked about the facts of the case, and we decided we would bring it forth. At that moment, it was going to be a public hearing. In the interim, as the clerk has just read, the applicant has rescinded the application at the planning board level, but apparently has one at the ZBA level. But Kate and I, Alderman Ray, I should say, felt we appreciated the cooperation of the committee to let it come before the common council as a public meeting, and as has been described, it will actually be for the good of the city. And just a general reminder, on behalf of the president of the council, it's an opportunity to speak, but there'll be no opportunity to dialogue. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. This time, it's open to the public. If anybody wants to come up.
Thank you, council, thank you, everyone. I live in that neighborhood, and as a homeowner, I experienced a lot of flooding due to the, all the houses up the hill. More construction in that area increases water. Coming down the hill floods our basements down at the bottom there. You know, a lot of people use those woods there to, you know, it absorbs a lot of water and so forth, so it affects all the people who live down below. So if you develop up above, it's going to affect the people down below with the changes in weather, more water, more flood. I've noticed increasing flooding in my basement. I'm just very concerned about more construction and development right up the street from my house. What I found even on my own house is somebody had bought my backyard unbeknownst to myself, and they're trying to develop that. So every little inch back there in those woods is trying to get bought up and developed, and, you know, I mean, there's a cemetery over there, there's a lot of animals, deer, places for them to go and live, not like chewing up everybody's, you know, gardens and stuff like that. You see the deer walking around the neighborhood, it's hysterical. So, anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Name and address.
There you go. Can I ask you your name, because otherwise in the minutes, it's going to say unidentified street.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure. Jamie, J-A-M-I-E, last name C-U-P, like cup, and then O-L-O.
And address, could you state your address also for the record?
Yeah, 46 West Conklin Avenue.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, thank you for your time, everyone, thank you.
How are you doing? Jason Liechtenstein, 1 Clinton Street. You know, I know that the proposal for the houses was turned down, or it was withdrawn by the company, but I also received a certified letter today saying that on February 15th, they're bringing it back to the zoning board. So we felt it was important to speak today on behalf of this. A lot of us up there have built houses, we've been up there for a long time now, and when we built the houses up there, we were under the information that we have to build a house with 75 feet of road front. While they were looking for the information, they struggled to find all of it, but there was a meeting that took place on September 11th, 1990, I think it was 1991, I believe, 1991, where there was a hearing that took place, and at that hearing, Jack Stack of Slate Hill, New York, requested front yard width variance for single-family homes up on West Conklin. And his proposal was to build three houses on 150 feet of land, and in that meeting, he was denied because he didn't have the road front footage he needed. We know that because when I reached out to, I couldn't, we couldn't find the minutes for that meeting, but when we reached out to the Stack family, they were still bitter about it almost 30 years later, that they only built two houses instead of three because of the income they lost out on. That's kind of like our premise for what we're going with here, on that when they're building up in that area, they should be building on 75 feet of road front. We understand that they put back in to build on, build 60, six houses again up there, which is impossible because they own right now 288 feet of road front. 288 feet of road front leads them to under four houses. They can't build three, they can't build three-quarters of a house, they can only build a full house. So with the land they have up there and the turnabout that's required, we can't see how they could build anything more than three houses, based on the same rules that we've been abiding, that we've been abiding by as we've been building our houses in that area. Our other concern with this is on Clinton Street. So I live on Clinton Street, I live on the paper road of Clinton Street, my house sits on one Clinton Street, but my house technically sits on Orange Terrace. Through Clinton Street, you have two LLCs owned by the same person buying alternating lots, because they found a loophole in the system that allows them to build on a 50-foot lot if their land, if their land locked. Meaning they don't own the house to, and I'm sure you understand this, but the property to the left or the property to the right, they don't own it, so they can build on 50 feet right there. When you look at the LLCs that are purchasing these properties, it's the same person, he's just purchasing it under different LLCs. I don't know if that person's the same as the people that are up here trying to buy this, trying to build this property, but the fear is if we allow this to happen, then what's going to happen on Clinton Street? We've come accustomed to a quality of life up there where we're not on top of one another. We're not saying anybody shouldn't be able to build a house. You want to build a house on a lot of land, build a house on a lot of land, but they should be bound by the same rules that we were. And I understand that my property falls different because I sit on a corner lot, so my building regulations were different than, say, the houses across the street that the Villafane's own or that the Gill family owns. They landed on different lots because their, their house doesn't sit on a corner lot like mine does. But they were told they had to build on a 75-foot lot. So with these guys coming up trying to, it almost seems like they're trying to circumvent the rules. And, you know, we were told recently that it's the job of a politician to identify the loopholes and make sure that the loopholes aren't taken advantage of. So we're here today to talk, to talk about it, bring it to your guys' attention. February 15th, we'll be back, just to, well, I'll be back at least to make sure that the same opinion is heard and that we have an opportunity to still address and make sure that people know that what they're trying to do while it's, it's wrong, honestly. And then there was questions that came up from our point of view was, our road is 30 feet wide, why does this road get to be 25 feet wide? Like, why do they get to cut corners on this? The last time this went to the zoning board, they proposed a certain turnaround at the end of the road. Why was the turnaround altered between going to the zoning board and coming to the next level? I've watched the DPW trucks back up and almost crashing into the retaining wall across from us because they can't turn around anywhere on the road. So now you're going to double the length of that road, what's going to happen when those DPW trucks or, or fire trucks or any other truck is trying to back up down that road and they don't have a proper turnaround in the end? What has to happen is they'd have to take some of their land, and they'd have to make that a big enough turnaround to fit one of those fire trucks back there. And again, I don't know the speculations of this, but I know that from I read the minutes in the last meeting, and I know it was brought up by one of the people who spoke in the last meeting, that they questioned the size of the turnabout. It wasn't, I don't know if it was addressed in that meeting, but it should cause, you know, it should just bring something up. Especially today, we're watching these Amazon trucks flying up and down the road, nobody's turning around. I got three little kids, the Gill family at the end has two little kids, the Villafanes have their grandchildren there, you know, there's kids at the corner, there's a lot of kids that live in that neighborhood. We don't need these trucks flying around backing up, they should be able to turn around safely, so when they're driving out, they can see where they're going and make sure these kids aren't in the road. Because as much as I like to think my kids are doing the right thing, I got a five-year-old and a nine-year-old. You know, they're not always doing the right thing, paying attention to cars coming up and down the road. That's the responsibility of the driver, but they need to be able to turn around properly. So these are my questions about what's going on here, these are my concerns about it. And again, I know it was withdrawn, but today I went to the post office and picked up my certified letter, where I know that it's coming from their lawyer's office on the 15th, so I thought it was appropriate to speak tonight. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Maria Jetchamlong, I live at 2-4 Clinton Street, and in regards to what Jason said, when I had my house built, I was forced to build, I have two lots, and I was forced to build on both lots. I couldn't put my house in the front lot and have a nice big yard because I had to follow code. And also with what Jason said about the other properties on Clinton Street, yes, every other property is owned by every other person, and I can verify that is the same owner because I used to work for the firm that used to represent him. So I know for a fact the owner of those properties. And eventually, it's going to come around again, and they're going to try to do the same thing. We're not, again, we're not saying that we don't want them to build, but we like to have our property, and on top of that, I live below street level, and what's going to happen when it comes to any kind of sewage problems, because I have a pump to push all my septic up to street level, and all these homes are now going to come to the same sewer hole, what's going to happen if something gets clogged or... We don't even want to go there and think what can possibly happen in my house because that's not going to be a nice sight. So these are just some of the concerns that we have, and we like the quality of life up there, and I don't think they should be allowed to come in here with an attorney because we can't afford an attorney ourselves, and let them get away with what's right. These are the laws, and they should also be in compliance with it. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Louis Villafane, and I live at 19 Orange Terrace. And my property was the one that Jack Stack was the one that, he wanted to build two houses, actually, three, no, two houses, and he was stuck with building one house on that, on my lot. And fortunate for me, I lucked out. But now, I've been there 30 years, and I am accustomed to, in that particular area, you ain't going to see any houses on 50-foot lots, okay? It's 75 feet or 100 feet. Check that area, I'm accustomed to that, I wouldn't maintain that lifestyle of not being, having a house on top of me. And again, there are a lot of kids. When I first moved in there, it was just my son and Pete's grandson, okay? Now, there's a lot of kids, a lot of traffic, and I am very concerned about that. Thank you.
My name's Kelly Cushing, I live at 54 Mountain Avenue. I've lived there over 20 years. My lot connects to 13 Terrace. I looked into buying it from Reniki a few years ago, but the lot was only 50 wide, couldn't do anything with it then, they shouldn't be able to do anything with it now. Plus, they came in with an excavator, I don't feel that they properly knocked down the trees, there's a lot of uprooted trees, they fell in my property, my neighbor's property, literally 10 days after I had 100 people in my yard, the tree fell, I had to clean it up. So I don't know, maybe somebody should go back there and check out those trees, totally unsafe. We have a lot of kids up on Mountain Avenue as well, those trees can fall at any time. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Yeah, we are. Remarks of the mayor?
Well, first, I want to thank everyone for coming in and make sure that you clearly understand that the, as the one speaker mentioned, that February 15th is the zoning board of appeals meeting, and that body has the right to hear, they have a right to make the application, but it's important for you folks to get there and voice your opinions. And we, as individual members, your aldermen, can attend that meeting on behalf of, as your representatives also. It's just that we can't speak at it tonight because of, we don't want to jeopardize the city's legal position if the board makes a decision that's not favorable to the applicant. So, but people will be there speaking on your behalf to the zoning board of appeals, it's a five-member board, and they'll listen to the, to the applicant, and they'll also listen to what your concerns are, and make a decision on whether they should be granted the, I think it's 450-foot lots and 244-foot lots. And I think precedent and a lot of other things have a lot to do with their decisions, but they'll be making those, they'll be making that call, but it's important that you are heard and that the zoning board of appeals hears you. So on other matters, recycling is the issue of the week. We were, I guess, given a violation notice by Orange County that our recycling loads are, have too much garbage and too much municipal solid waste, including garbage bags that may contain recyclables, but they're still not allowed in the recycling bin. So we have to reinforce with the public that recycling, in the recycling containers, they have to be loose containers, they cannot put a garbage bag full of recyclables in your container, because if they're there and they're spotted by the, by the sanitation department, we cannot pick it up, and, because the loads are being refused and rejected, and it's causing a lot of problems. And believe us, we don't, well, I can't speak for Jacob, but it costs the city more to get rid of recyclables, believe it or not, than it does of regular garbage. It used to be the other way around, where we would get money for recyclables, but now I think it's, we, we pay $84 a ton for municipal solid waste, and I believe we're paying $110 a ton to get rid of recyclables. So, but then there's also potential penalties. It's crazy that the law's still in place if there's no market for recyclables, I don't know why we have to do it, but by law, we have to do it, and by law, it has to be somewhat clean recyclables, meaning that we're not allowed to pick it up. We did have a few calls over this past cycle of people who, whose recyclables weren't picked up, we believe that's the reason why, but we're going to do some more education. You guys, as individual aldermen, have to make some efforts to educate your customers and your wards, and we can do our best to encourage the, at least clean recyclables going in those bins. The, one other issue is myself, Jacob and Maria attended Congressman Ryan's swearing-in at West Point. He was able to deliver pretty quickly on a nice grant for us for water infrastructure of about $3.4 million. It's a follow-up to an application that was made by Congressman Maloney, but we do now have confirmation of that, so congratulations to Congressman Ryan, and, and thank you for the, for the quick action on the grant. And then one last piece I have is just a report on the Build Home for Sky. We in the council are well aware, and I know the, some of the public is, of the efforts by the city working in conjunction with the Mendoza family regarding a vacant lot in 52 Broad Street in the city. The groundbreaking for this home is scheduled for Wednesday, February 15th, at 2:00 p.m., all are welcome. This project is part of a Build Home, Build a Home for Sky, and it's, the developer is Albert Feeney. Kevin O'Reilly from Satin Foods, who's the employer of the Mr. Mendoza, Spring Lake Toy Foundation, the City of Middletown's involvement, Middletown Fire Department, Walkhill Engine Company Number Six donated almost $14,000 to the program, and are also relying on community donations. It's a good program, it's something that the other night was recognized on Channel 4 News, Chuck Scarborough, and we're going to play the, if you didn't catch it, we're going to play the little skit here that, that they did on the, on Channel 4, I think it was two nights ago. And that's all I have, the report, unless you have any other questions.
Sky Mendoza was paralyzed in a horrible crash on the Major Deegan Expressway more than four years ago now. She's 18, and she depends upon her motorized wheelchair, so the people of Middletown, New York are making sure she can live in a home that meets her needs. Here's news for us, Jen Maxfield.
Sky Mendoza is finishing up school for the day. The 18-year-old uses a special computer she controls with her eyes. Ever since Sky was paralyzed from the neck down in a car accident, school and just about everything else has been in her bedroom.
To be that young and to have something like that happen to you, and see your friends on Instagram doing what they're doing, living their life, and her being home.
Sky's entire life changed at age 14, when she survived a horrific crash on the Major Deegan Expressway in the Bronx that killed her pregnant stepmother and injured her brother. Sky was in a coma for weeks and endured a year and a half of rehab before coming home to her family.
All I can do is thank God and just be thankful for everything, and be thankful she's still here with us.
But living at home has its challenges. The Mendoza family apartment wasn't built for a motorized wheelchair and all of Sky's medical equipment, so the City of Middletown donated this parcel of land, where contractors will donate time and materials to build her family a new house.
And a wonderful Christmas present that will be for Sky and her family.
The Spring Lake Toys Foundation is leading the fundraising effort with more than 25 business owners and hundreds of donors contributing to build the home valued at close to $400,000.
It will be 100% handicap accessible, she'll be able to wheel through all of the rooms, she'll have a handicap accessible bathroom.
Here in the family's apartment, it's challenging to fit Sky's wheelchair from her bedroom down this hallway into the kitchen, but in the new custom home, she'll be able to wheel right up to the counter where she loves being involved with the cooking. The Mendoza family is grateful for the support of the community, including Kevin O'Reilly, Orlando's boss at Satin Fine Foods, who kicked off the fundraising efforts and has been by the family's side since the accident four and a half years ago.
I think most of us are blessed in life in many ways, you know, and it's part of our job, I think, to take care of others.
In addition to their new home, the Mendoza family has other reasons to celebrate after experiencing so much tragedy. Orlando was remarried last summer, and Sky was the first one out on the dance floor. In Middletown, New York, I'm Jen Maxfield, News 4 New York.
Well, hats off to the good people of Middletown, New York, that's just wonderful. And that does it for us.
Remarks of the department heads, economic development?
Good evening. Just following up, we had a community development agency meeting tonight where we discussed, we have a house going into contract, 149A Wisner. We have some bid openings on Washington Street property for demo. So the program is moving ahead with some more houses that we're going to get new homeowners in the community. Also, with the Paramount, there's a bunch of shows that we keep adding, so go to our website, MiddletownParamount.com, sign up for our newsletter because we do special show announcements and also special, you know, ticket pricing before they actually go on sale to the public. So sign up for our newsletter so you can see everything that's coming up, we got a lot of great things happening. And the movie that's coming up is A Man Called Otto that starts this Friday. And that's all I have for tonight.
Any questions for Maria? All right, thank you, Maria.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to let you know, we had a nice, quiet month of January, total 76 calls. I'm happy to see that the city's looking into the tax breaks for the volunteer firefighters. I know that'll happen hopefully within a year, next year, but I'm glad to see we're moving forward with that. Parade date is October 7th, inspection night, October 6th, and hopefully, there's no football game on that night. Our annual dinner, the date is still being looked into, we're looking for date in May or a day after the parade. We're still up in the air about it, but we'll let you know. And I just want to let everybody know, Fireman Joe is moving forward, taking baby steps while we're getting there. The bids will be back February 15th, and after they're looked at between Jacob and the consultant, hopefully, we'll have a winner at a bid and keep moving forward. Any questions?
Questions from the fire chief, any grand marshal yet?
You're looking at the grand marshal.
Police chief?
Good evening. I actually have nothing this evening unless you have something for me.
Anything for the police chief? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
DPW commissioner?
Thank you.
Good, good evening, all. I'm going to start with Alderman Massey, the reservoirs are 89% full, so we're in good shape. We had a major water leak in our system, and it took us a while to find it because it was just under building, an old building in the City of Middletown. That tells you our old infrastructure and the need to continue to invest in there, so we were losing about over a million gallons per day for almost a week until we finally were able to find it. It was leaking right under the old building and going into the stream without us knowing where it is, although we did walk the streams underground and we could not find it. So it's very difficult, and, but that comes with the old infrastructure that we have and shows you the need that we continue, we need to continue to move forward to invest in our infrastructure. And like the mayor said, we thanks the new congressman, Ryan, for the $3.4 million for improving our infrastructure, that would be for the 24-inch water line feeding the city, two-thirds of the city with water from the water treatment plant down along Manhattan Avenue. So that would be our phase two of the water system improvement. We opened the bids yesterday for the court, which is basically the federal courthouse, the city purchased it, and they redesigned it so that city court will move from where they are here, next to city hall, down to the federal courthouse. The bids came in relatively high, $5 million. So the mayor, he's looking into different alternatives right now, what to do and where to go. to do and where to go from here. Will be talking to the architects, and we'll see what we can do. But the bids, just under $5 million, were relatively high. The mayor spoke about the recycling. I'm not going to talk about anything else except for recycling tonight because it's really very important. We all understand the need for recycling and the importance of it, and we need to do it, but we have to do it right. Otherwise, it will start costing us more money. What happens is, some people, they add municipal solid waste, garbage, household garbage, clothing, styrofoam, what have you, in the recycling, in the blue cart. And then our guys, they cannot see it. They come in there, the machine, the truck will come in, pick it up, dump it, put it back, and move to the next one. Until we go and get rid of that recyclable at Orange County Transfer Station, and then if they see garbage mixed with it, then they call it, "This is contaminated." It loses the value of any recyclable that you can get any money for it. Of course, like the mayor said, we're not getting any money for it. However, it's good for the environment. It's less load on the landfill. It's better for energy, renewables, recycling, and so on. So what we are requesting from you is to put your recyclable, follow the brochure that we have on our website. We posted that again, and it tells you exactly what is acceptable as recyclables and what is not. And be kind enough just to rinse the barrels or the containers before you put them in the blue cart and take it out to the curb. That would be very helpful. That will increase the value of the recyclables when Orange County tries to get rid of it, or sell it, or their contractor. At this time, there is no market for it. The mayor, myself, and I think Alderman Massey, we're going to be going to a seminar specially for marketing recyclables, the current market, the condition, what to do with it. So we're trying to educate ourselves and to try to find the market for our recyclables to try to generate some revenue. The bottom line is, if it is contaminated, recyclables is going to be thrown out. It will end up costing us more money because we're handling it twice. We pick it up as recyclable. We take it, then we pick it back up again, and then we take it as municipal solid waste. Right now, we had to modify our procedure right now. Instead of taking it directly to Orange County Transfer Station, we're taking it to our own transfer station, spreading it, separating the recyclables as much as we can, then take it some, taking some over to Orange County Transfer Station for recyclables, and the rest of it is going to go on our tractor trailer to go to a landfill. So it's a lot of money it's costing us. If we don't respect the rule of recyclables, we don't have to pick it up. We can just mix it with the municipal solid waste, and we'll pick up the whole city in four days instead of five days. So we don't have to pick up recyclables, but we cannot do that. It's the law. It's the right thing to do. It's the best thing for the environment. The mayor is right. It's costing us much more right now to get rid of recyclables versus municipal solid waste. However, don't make it hard on us, please, by adding garbage and municipal solid waste into our recyclables because the cost is tremendous, time, material, and actual money per ton. So recyclables, again, visit our website. The brochure is right there. It tells you what you can recycle and what you cannot recycle. And it's very simple, and do not put it inside bags because very soon, we're going to start sending our inspectors ahead of our trucks to look into what's inside the container. And unfortunately, we may have to issue citation and violation and courts and all that stuff, and we don't want to do that. We don't have time for that. We don't want to do it. I know you're trying to, you're best to recycle, increase the recyclables. We appreciate that. But make it clean so that it will not be contaminated, so we don't end up costing us more time and money and effort to get rid of it. With that, I will conclude.
Any question for Jacob? Thank you, Jacob. Mayor, Jacob talked on the court. Can you just tell us?
Yeah, well, we can go back probably seven, eight years when this whole process began, when under the New York State Court, Office of Court Administration gave a mandate to the city that we add a second court. And I think part of that is a result of them centralizing some of the local courts, where Middletown doesn't only handle Middletown court issues. We handle some regional issues. They handle drug court for the regions. And so part of that need, at least in our assessment, is based on regional needs. Under state law, we are responsible for providing the facility. So we were given a mandate by the Office of Court Administration, and we've been, we were fighting them for many, many years because their original complex that they submitted to us was, at that time, was approaching $8 to $10 million. Myself and Jacob had several meetings with them. They were sometimes very vocal meetings, and we've, at some point, we were able to gain the support of the chief judge at that time, who allowed us to use the common council chambers here as a second court. It was supposed to be an interim until a plan was developed for a more economical building. It's been going on now and operating fine. The Office of Court Administration does not like it because they have to have a second set of security for this courtroom here. As you know, you see the metal detector here, and so they have to have a second crew for when both courts are operating. Both courts don't operate five days a week. So we were able to secure a grant through Assemblywoman Gunther's office for the purchase of the old federal court building, and we were hoping to use that as the second court. But that meant the same conditions, that it would have two security issues. So they wanted us to consolidate both courts into one facility. And we were in agreement to looking at it, and we, but the demands of the Office of Court Administration throughout this process, a lot of them were unreasonable. For example, a room might have been, in this building, one of the offices may have been six by eight, and their code might have required to be seven by 10. And so we have to rip out, we had to do a lot of gutting in the building. They demanded new HVAC, new, a lot of demands. But even through the process, our architects and engineers came up with cost estimates in the low $3 millions. As Jacob stated, the bids just came back, and they're in the high fours, approaching $5 million. And to me, it's unacceptable, since we've been operating under a system that has been doable for the last numerous years, several years. My opinion, and of course, we're going to do it in consultation with you guys and the local court, is that if the state wants this facility built, that they're going to have to cough up a lot of the money in order to build it. Now, there are advantages to the city, of course, for doing this. One is, our police department is full and over capacity. We have people in the basement, and our plans were then to expand some city hall offices, but the majority of the old court would have been police station. So there are benefits long-term, both short-term and long-term, to the city doing it, but not at $5 million. So we're going to go back to the court, and we're going to say, this is not a City of Middletown, solely a City of Middletown issue. We believe that the state should put some money into this project. How much, we'll discuss and negotiate. And if it's a number that's acceptable to us, then we will come back to you with a proposal. If it's not a number that's acceptable to us, then we will fight like hell to keep this second court here for the two or three days a week that they do it, and save $5 million, and figure another way to expand police services within the existing building or out the back of the two buildings here. So we have options. Whether those options are acceptable to the court, Office of Court Administration, we don't know because the bids were just open yesterday. So I don't want to get out in front of ourselves either. So that's where we're at. But the number is, I know Jacob spoke with our engineers and architects who did the estimates. They were shocked by the numbers also. But as you saw with the ONW station, an 80 to 90 to 100% increase, pre-COVID to now, is, seems to be the norm. So that's the story.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Superintendent Recreation.
Good evening, everyone. Just want to report that the Winter Festival that was canceled this past weekend because of the extremely cold temperatures this past Saturday is going to be held on February 18th. So we're super excited about that. And I'd also like to give you the number of unduplicated people who've attended from adults to children our skating rink, which is a very exact number because anyone who attends ice skating at least one time does have to fill out a waiver. So we have the exact number of how many people have attended, and I am blown away by this number. Does anybody have any guesses?
1,412.
I think he had some inside information. No? Real guess? 1,435 people, unduplicated, have attended the ice skating rink so far this year. And we still have another, a month possibly, depending on the weather, to go. But I was blown away by that number. It's a testament to listening to city residents and their wants and needs of the community and everyone here pushing for and wanting something to better our community. So thank you, and it's in good use and well-maintained and well-supervised and well-attended. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Good job. City clerk?
Nothing this evening.
Any questions for our clerk? All right. Petitions and complaints, nothing this evening. Reports of Alderman, Alderman Massey.
Yes. Good evening. Just quickly, on the Sky Mendoza, that property is located in the First Ward, and I know Alderman Witt, along with the entire council, the administration, I'm glad it's coming to fruition, and we look forward to the 15th, to the groundbreaking. I hope people can show up for it, and thank you very much.
Alderman Witt?
Thank you very much. Yeah, piggybacking on Mr. Massey, I actually had Sky Mendoza on my Little League team about six years ago. So very nice young lady, and I really hope that this works out well for her. I think it's going to. A few things to follow Mr. Gomez, what he had said about the information about the upcoming budget and the school board elections. All of that information is available to date on the Middletown School District website. So there'll be everything you need to know about the budget. It's, all the presentations will be on there, middletownschools.org. We'll have the candidates. We'll have their bios. We're not going to endorse anybody, but it'll be in alphabetical order, so you know that that can be a landing page for the next three months for you to check this information out. Tomorrow is high school graduation. There will be 38 students, I believe, it's 38, who will be graduating, and that's always a real good story with those folks because either you are leaving in three and a half years, which takes quite some doing, or you need to stay a little bit longer to get some things taken care of, and that's a pretty good accomplishment also as well. So congratulations to all of those people. Thank you to Alderman Johnson and Alderwoman Ray for keeping the Maple Hill talk moving as far as what we're going to do, or hope to do, with the pool space. I know the mayor mentioned it at the last meeting about creating a survey. It's my understanding, there is one that's out and is getting ready to go out in our community. So I hope that not just people in that area, but the entire city has a chance to fill that out and has their voices heard. So, and finally, there'll be no First Ward meeting tomorrow due to scheduling conflicts for us. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. I want to remind people that this is Black History Month, except in Florida, where it's a felony to teach black history. So I'm glad we're in New York. Again, the warming station, they've been doing a great job, the people there. And I urge you to go to middletownwarmingstation.com. And they do have cancellations. People have been sick or had people in the family sick, and so they can't make it, and you can see what you can sign up for and undertake them a meal, if you can supply a meal for people because they do get a hot dinner every night. They have to stay there. So it's a wonderful job that they do. Tonight, of course, is the State of the Union, so that's at 9:00. If you're listening tonight, if you're listening to a rebroadcast, don't worry about it, you missed it. I did get to listen to the school board meeting this last Thursday, and thank you, Dr. Johnson, for representing the city well, doing your report. I also wanted to mention that Freddie Williams and Mitch Williams and some others couldn't say enough positive things about the Middletown Police Department and our police chief and how cooperative they are on every level and how much the community is involved. So I thought that was an important message to get out there. We'll have no February constituents meeting next Monday. We'll start again in March. I think it's the 13th. Remind everybody again that April 22nd will be our, Saturday, April 22nd, which is Earth Day, will be our Middletown Citywide Cleanup Day. So try and mark that on your calendar and keep it clear. Save the date. Other than that, I'd say just watch out for giant balloons. You can't be too careful. Thank you.
Alderman Ray?
Good evening. I wanted to just thank the members of our Third Ward community for coming out and speaking their minds tonight. It's always appreciative that you guys get involved in what's going on here and communicating with myself and Alderman Johnson. I don't, won't speak to the issue at hand specifically. My only opinion as relates to our city and our codes is that they are intended, and their purpose is to protect our quality of life, our property values, the condition of our city. And I think it's important to make sure that those things aren't circumvented. Consistency matters. So I think that those are things for us to, you know, just always be aware of. And those are my thoughts on this evening's events. And that's all I have.
Alderman Johnson?
Thank you very much. Yes, I did attend the school board meeting. I presented the annual report of CDA and Park and Recs, and it was well-received. So thank you for that. Skating, at the school meeting, they mentioned that there was going to be a school outing today from Twin Towers, and I happened to see one of the teachers in my day job after he was there, and he was just really happy about it. The teachers loved it. The kids loved it. They love seeing their teachers skate around. A good time was had by all, and it's, once again, it's just more glue to keep everything kind of working cohesively and together. As was mentioned, Alderwoman Ray and I have put together the survey. Caitlin is our Sherpa on this process, and I'm told it will go out via social media in the near future. It's five simple questions. It'll be a 30-day turnaround, and we'll see what the people think about what we would do at Maple Hill if it wasn't a pool. With respect to Orange Terrace, I think it's safe to say that Alderwoman Ray and I are watching it closely, per the mayor's admonition. We'll refrain from specific comment. While it is a Third Ward issue right now, it is a citywide issue in the future, and we'll see how it turns out. Thank you.
Alderman Jean-François?
Yes. Good evening. First, I'd like to thank the fire chief to give us the information on county legislature, Joe Sierra, far as his injuries. He's doing pretty good, so hoping for a speedy recovery. Secondly, I thought we was doing well with recycling for a while. So it's sad to see that, you know, we going back where we started, being that we was doing so well. So hopefully, the community will get back on track and do what we're supposed to do, do our duties, and keep that on a positive note. Secondly, Sky Mendoza Foundation, that's been going on for a while. It's nice to see that that's taking place in February 15. Looking forward. Thank you.
Alderman Tobin?
Yes, I mean, it's a great news report on the Middletown, so I was proud to be, proud that our city is well-represented there and all the good people coming together for Sky. And I'd like to thank all the people working at the warming station, especially over these last few weeks. It's been very, very cold. That's it for me.
Okay. Do business.
Good evening. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, reappointing Richard Krogan as Assistant Corporation Counsel.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, second by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Rube?
Tobin?
Hi.
Jean-François?
Here.
Johnson?
Hi.
Ray?
Hi.
Kleiner?
Hi.
Witt?
Hi.
Massey?
Hi.
President Rodriguez?
Hi.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François, reappointing Mark Woody to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Resolution by Alderman Jean-François.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François, reappointing Mark Woody to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Resolution by Alderman Jean-François, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Rope.
Tobin?
Hi.
Jean-François?
Hi.
Johnson?
Hi.
Ray?
Hi.
Kleiner?
Hi.
Witt?
Hi.
Massey?
Hi.
President Rodriguez?
Hi.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, appointing Jim Burdis as chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Rope.
Tobin?
Hi.
Jean-François?
Hi.
Johnson?
Hi.
Ray?
Hi.
Kleiner?
Hi.
Witt?
Hi.
Massey?
No.
President Rodriguez?
Hi.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderwoman Ray, accepting a funding award of $38,820 for the Recreation and Parks Department.
Resolution by Alderman Ray, seconded by Alderman Jean-François. Any discussion? Rope.
Tobin?
Hi.
Jean-François?
Hi.
Johnson?
Hi.
Ray?
Hi.
Kleiner?
Hi.
Witt?
Hi.
Massey?
Hi.
President Rodriguez?
Hi.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, authorizing a $9,769 budget transfer to cover an overdrawn account.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Rope.
Tobin?
Hi.
Jean-François?
Hi.
Johnson?
Hi.
Ray?
Hi.
Kleiner?
Hi.
Witt?
Hi.
Massey?
Hi.
President Rodriguez?
Hi.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, authorizing a $19,845 budget transfer for the water treatment plant, for water process control equipment, and rotary screw compressor.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Ray. Any discussion? Rope.
Tobin?
Hi.
Jean-François?
Hi.
Johnson?
Hi.
Ray?
Hi.
Kleiner?
Hi.
Witt?
Hi.
Massey?
Hi.
President Rodriguez?
Hi.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, authorizing proposals from Trustmark and PNC Flex spending benefit for the city's self-sponsored health insurance plan.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Rope.
Tobin?
Hi.
Jean-François?
Hi.
Johnson?
Hi.
Ray?
Hi.
Kleiner?
Hi.
Witt?
Hi.
Massey?
Hi.
President Rodriguez?
Hi.
Carries.
Local laws?
We have local law number one of 2023 being introduced this evening, a local law transferring authority regarding the fire, police to the fire department.